And we're out of executive session with nothing to report.
Oh, yeah.
We wait for folks or we?
Down here.
Okay, I was under the impression that we're.
How you want to proceed.
So, we're talking about the return to retire, return to work policy amendment.
Okay, at this time, I want to make a motion to abolish the retire, return to work policy.
Second motion.
So, moved and seconded. Here's where I stand. I like the concept. You know, A, it allows somebody to retire who's put in their time. And it allows them to come back. Or gives them a mechanism to come back and work for the county. It's a win-win for both of them in concept. There's, you know, it's a little bit of a savings to the county. It allows a person to keep working. But what I don't like is all these intricacies with, you know, CBA. It just, I don't know. Having heard some of the comments Joe made before we went into executive session, it just seems like a huge can of worms. And I, but I like, but I like the mechanism.
Have we ever had any other circumstances of retirement, rehire?
Julie. Without this policy? Just kidding. I don't know. I don't know.
Julie mentioned that somebody in her department had that.
Did, did May first love this policy recently?
No, this has been on the books for a while.
When you say a while, you mean five years, 25 years?
I would say between five and 10 years. It's been on their, in their books because other organizations and communities have been interested in it. So they came up with rules to follow if you were going to be participating in it.
I've been there seven years. I don't remember this. Anybody ever retiring?
Well, without this policy, I mean, obviously, what's, what a person could be doing. Let's take, you know, the current example. He could retire here and go to work for somebody else.
Correct.
And my feeling is, why can't he retire and come to work for us?
That's not a problem. It's under what conditions he comes back to work for us because, again, this particular case and whatnot, he's unable to go out and get pay and benefits equal to what's being proposed to him under this program. So it's, you say that, well, if we don't, we don't keep him, he's going to go somewhere else. Well, I say puppycock. He can't find another job that pays what it is, that gets the benefits he's getting here, even if we reduce little things like his pay or other things in the proposed changes. But, you're right. Well, it had nothing to do with that. It has a lot to do with unintended consequences, which we haven't talked about. It has to do with potential for litigation from the union because it violates the CBAs. And who knows what other pitfalls are out there. And I'm just saying that. I don't want to go through it. And what's going to happen, the discussion we had today, just getting through this policy, is the same discussion we're going to continue to have every time there is requests for return to work because we're going to scrutinize that, we'll have disagreements about what it should be, we're going to. And so I don't want to go through this every time somebody wants to retire and come back to work.
Sheriff, you have your.
I was just going to say, in this situation, it's kind of unique because in the position that he's in right now, he can leave and go to another agency and get paid exactly what he's getting paid because it's fully reimbursed by the state at state lieutenant's pay. I've been told that by both Commander Arno and by the director. So in this situation, that he can, he could walk to another department and he would get paid.
If he stayed in that position.
Yeah, which is what he intends to do, stay as a supervisor special agent in MDEA. That's what he likes.
MDEA isn't going to decide what he gets for personal vehicle, company vehicle. I'm not going to decide what he gets for health insurance benefits. I'm not going to decide what he gets for personal time off. MDEA doesn't set those. That is set by the department he goes to. I can tell you right now, if he went to Boozbroke PD and said, hi, and he's going to go back to MDEA, he's not going to get those benefits of pay, of benefits.
My understanding of the hours that he gets for vacation to start with, that is so that he doesn't start from zero. And he would, if he took some time off through the year, he would get paid for that. And then that would go away, correct? He accrue that year, whatever the hours are, and that's what he would start at the second year, correct?
Correct.
Look, you can grant him vacation time any time you want during the year.
Why can't prove it?
Yes.
Right, right. But if he doesn't have anything on the books, he doesn't.
Hey, I got a hell of a good idea, Sheriff. That $30,000 check we gave him December 29th, take three or four thousand, put it in your desk drawer. When you want to go to take a couple of weeks vacation, presto, paid vacation.
Well, but why? Why? He's earned that money. Why are we punishing him for something that he's earned?
What happens is, is he had accrued vacation time on the books. And because he's no longer here, we can't control when he gets paid for that. So we give it to him and say, you control it. That's what the money is for. It was never meant to be a windfall. And then we give it all back to him again if he comes back. So I'm not buying this, oh, this poor thing, he's got no vacation time on the books. Spend some of that $30,000 and pay for your own vacation.
That's cruel.
Well, it is cruel.
Yeah, it is.
Ask your taxpayers, they think that's cruel.
The, him being reimbursed for this time he has on the books has been done to everybody.
And why it's being reimbursed is what you need to understand. They think it's just a windfall, a retirement gift. Well, it's assigned to the vacation amount of vacation time so that you now can pay for your own vacation if you want to take a vacation.
And he gets time to work.
Well, what we're talking about here is this policy. And the, you know, in concept. I mean, do we want? The rest of this, to me, is, this case is semantics. We have. I'm worried that the times of not being able to hire deputies and, not only the sheriff's department, but all over the place, that something like this allows us the latitude to do that, to hire this person back, and it's savings. Now, maybe this agreement doesn't give those savings. I don't know that. I'm not, I've not dived into that. But I like this concept. It's just, there's just so many hangups.
Look, here's a question for you, though. Had this not been in place, would Chris Thornton retired December 29th?
Yes.
He would not. I mean, he's not, he's not 75 years old and he says, time to get out of the business. He's still a young man. He's got a long career ahead of him and whatnot. And he's got one hell of a good job right now. He's not going to retire if he can't come back to it. So if we didn't have this policy in place, he would still be here in January.
I think that's a question you have to ask him directly and not make that assumption.
Well, he, he never talked about retiring until we started talking about.
He never got, he never started talking about retirement until the last CBA, when the commissioners made everybody whole. And he's not the only person that was a benefit of that. And that was something that the commissioners, that the commissioners agreed to.
Every time we have a.
Well, no, that's, that's why.
No, we shouldn't have to have it. I, to me.
Well, no, I don't know if this motion is going to approve because I've made a motion that's been seconded to abolish the retire.
And that's, that's so antiquated thinking.
Yeah.
But we know.
Well, John, do you have, I mean.
I mean, I have the same worries about. I think I brought up with Joe.
Can't make that answer.
Yeah, make that up. Well, no, he said he wasn't a fan of this.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, John. You may get your. Do you read any book?
Yes, I do.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed as well. So, two to one, motion passes.
And the motion against what?
It's a motion from.
Apologies, I'll go back to the seventh.
Okay. So now we were going to go to the, to, under a chart, item E, which was retirement. Recognize Chris Thornton's retirement on Friday, December 29th. Is that?
I think we would have to ask him whether that was still, can we?
I agree. I think that.
I don't think we can, I think there needs to be a different day.
Well, a different day, I mean, not the date in here, but this needs to be.
Reconsidered by him.
Yes.
Wait a minute. We have abolished the policy. It no longer exists.
Yes.
There's nothing to him. We're going to have to tell him that our greatest apology is Chris. We approved a policy, whatnot, without giving a full review. Sorry, you went through this exercise, but lying for it, it no longer exists. It's not available.
Like he is on loan.
Okay, so I guess the question is, does he wish for us to consider this item or not?
For retirement, he can't.
I don't think that we can. I don't think it's fair to him for us to consider this.
It is a policy to be lying.
Well, no, but.
But he may not want to retire.
That's the point.
Right.
Isn't that the point?
That's the point.
Correct. Well, if there's no return, is there no return to work policy, whatnot? That's his decision whether or not he wants to withdraw his retirement.
And I think it would be appropriate to add that answer from him directly.
Exactly.
Not us to make that decision.
Well, that's right. Go ahead.
And I don't think he needs to rescind.
And I think that's where you're going.
Yeah.
Right. I think he probably needs some time to think.
Yes, I agree. Okay, so we will, item E front will disappear until he makes a request of us. Okay, so next is the 2024 BAC budget and suggestions for final actions. First is, well, we've got two things to consider. One is my understanding of what was done at the last meeting. And regarding the sheriff's department. And so my understanding was that what we were doing was, I don't know how to describe it. So you're going to have to be, we were removing, we were removing one position out of, out of 46.
10, Sheriff's 10, what about?
46. We're removing one spot, one job out of, or one position in 46.
From, from what the BAC recommended, yeah.
Okay, and then we were taking this second position in 46 and moving it to 10.
And there was a second position.
Well, there was two positions in the budget.
Originally, in the 23 budget, there are two positions.
Yes.
But in the 24 proposed budget from us to BAC, we took all of it out. They put one back.
Okay.
And we took that out of their recommendation.
So.
There is, there is, there is none to go anywhere else.
Okay, so they're working from the BAC. Then, having said that, I think, they put it in. I say that that comes out of 46 and into 10. Otherwise, we are, they're going to be, they're going to be a person short because they're already using that person that was in 46.
If MDEA said tomorrow, Sheriff, shut down that task force. No one is going to have that. And the sheriff's fully staffed in his patrol division. He would, that, the agent up there would have to come back and he would have to make a decision because he's got one too many people. And if he doesn't have a place for that person, he's going to have to lay him off.
I, I agree with that statement.
That's just what's happening here.
No, because he's already borrowing that, he's already using that person from 46 in his patrol division.
And that person in the patrol division came back because you had two on administrative leave. Once those two came back, he should have gone back to the drug task force. He's being paid on the drug task force. Now, if he's got him still in patrol, how's he paying him? Because Dakota is supposed to be paid for out of the drug task force.
Sheriff, we see something.
Yeah, I, I, that money is in the budget, whether it's in 46 or whether it's in 10.
For 23.
Yeah, right. So that, that person comes back and there would be no reason to cut that position out. Then we were, per your proposal, we would get a new position in January. And then I would, then I had asked for that, for lack of a better word, stipend. So allow us to promote a lieutenant, excuse me, a sergeant from within. Whatever the difference is between where that patrolman comes under the pay scale and the, and the sergeant's pay. That was my understanding of what your proposal was.
But sergeant is simply the difference between an existing patrolman and the sergeant's pay. It's not a new position.
That's, it's not a new, it's not a human, not a new.
A new human, right, right. So, and we never said that we were going to give you money January 1st. What we said was is that once you are fully staffed, everybody's there and trained and whatnot. Once you're ready for another hire, do come back to us and we'll talk about where we're going to get your money from. So it's not a January 1st appointment. You've already got, right now, a vacancy caused by potential for a patrolman being promoted to lieutenant. Or somebody moving up the ladder. Now, you've got a vacancy there and whatnot. You've got a patrolman going out with multi-month operation. You'd have no idea how long that's going to be. You need for somebody to be taking care of that warm body. So you're not anywhere near ready to hire anybody for January 1st.
Well, I think we are because we still have the position that John is not in right now down at the airport. And we can use that person down at the airport or rotate them in, which is what we're doing right now.
But that's not an additional patrol position. That's an existing one. And that's what I'm saying. If you don't want to use Dakota back in the drug task force, you've got to find another place that's got some money for, whether the airport or civil process. You've got a lot of uses for people, but you need to find money to pay them. Because you don't have enough money for 14 patrol people in your department 10. And that's what you're doing if you put Dakota back and you don't send him back after you got, after having gotten those two administrative leave deputies back. So as far as the budget's concerned, the budget doesn't reflect any new positions in 2024 for the sheriff. There are no, there are no new positions.
So if I try to clarify, you know, we get more and we, what you, what you see up there right now based upon the changes that we made, or I made and Monica helped me make, but obviously, I'm taking responsibility for the changes that are up there. On the bottom right corner. Do you have the 510 up there, Michael? No, this is just the overall changes. So I'm just talking about overall numbers, but.
Okay, so this 14% is what's on our desk.
Yes, it's the one heart with Clark changes.
Yes.
Interesting.
Which is a.
All right, but what that entails basically was taking that position that was in 46 out and removing, clearing everything out of Department 46 except for the one supervisor position, which would be reimbursed at 100%. The dog and all that stuff was put back in before anyway, in Department 10 anyway. It does not include taking the funds for 2024 that were being used for that deputy that's in this Department 46. It does not include that in proposed 2024 budget. Does not include that person moving over there and adding a deputy in to the existing pool of 2023 deputies.
So my point is, that deputy can't move to 10.
No. No, sir. Well, they can move, but the person can move to 10 if you have a vacancy for him, but you can't add that position to. In 23, as I understand it, there were 13 positions in Department 10, correct, Michael?
So the total were 18 altogether, including all the deputies that saw the task force, yeah?
24. There cannot be more than 18. It has to be the same number as 23.
Based on my understanding of what you proposed, listening to the tape, and then I, I was asking you again, was that what you intended? But it sounds like other members didn't realize that that was necessarily what you.
So. Well, because we need to talk about, first of all, we need to be sure we're talking about positions as opposed to people.
Yes.
I certainly am not proposing that somebody in the sheriff's department gets laid off. Because I wouldn't be proposing this if I thought there was a chance. There is so many uses for this additional person that we don't have to start, we don't have to add a position to the sheriff's department to utilize that person.
So.
And that's, and that's my job, to manage the people that are in.
That's right. And we're saying that you can still manage your department and keep everybody you've got down there with 18 positions. Because it's got so many uses.
And that's what, we're not talking about that either, but in order to make this spreadsheet work, as I indicated, you have to fill in names at certain pay rates, right? And that's how this whole budget thing, based on every department, everything. So that was the conversation we had in the morning last week was, if you're not adding a new position in 10, then you have one extra person. And that either means you take the person you have in 46 and move them to 10, and then you have to take the person or person from 10, presumably the last person in, last out, and move them to another department, or you terminate their employment because you don't have another spot.
But the problem, Michael, with that is, is that the sheriff knows come January of 24, he's got to have a lieutenant. So you don't have a name to plug into that.
No, we don't.
But you know that somebody in the existing patrol division is going to be moving into lieutenant's position. And that, so, so, I mean, maybe between you and the sheriff, just pick somebody and compute that wage.
But that's basically what we did for your proposal. But then I'm hearing from them and I'm hearing from at least one other member of the commission that they intended, whatever the money was in Department 46 for that one deputy, would be moved to Department 10.
That is not.
So that they would keep the same number.
Okay, well, what's approval? Okay, I'll give you that.
So what's there, not what you see that?
But my question is this. There's 18, did I hear there's 18 slots in Department 10?
Positions.
Positions.
Total.
Total, right? Was that true?
In 2023.
I don't have the, I don't have the roster in front of me. I'm sorry.
Okay, so let's assume for a second that's true. And then there was one in Department 46. So that's 19.
No, no, there was two different departments. And 19 is there only because of the task force. This is no different.
Yeah, but there's a person part.
This, yeah, nevertheless, there's two people back in the contract deputy account. And if Tremont said today, we're all done. We don't want any more. The sheriff is left with a, a train patrol deputy, nobody to pay him. That's exactly what happened in the task, in the front task force. We have abolished funding the task force from our budget. Now, if the sheriff has got a person there, he, and he needs to find a place for him, but he needs to find a place that has money to cover his, the cost of that, that person. Because if he doesn't, it is the last guy in, the first guy out.
Yeah, but my point is this. That person that's in 46 is actually working in the sheriff's department.
And that's only because the sheriff is elected to pull him out and put him in the, in the patrol.
Because he needs him.
Big deal. I'm talking budget. I'm not talking about his operations. I'm talking budget. He needs five more, he claims, but we're not going to let him hire five more people if he doesn't have in his budget. We're not going to let him move the agent from the drug task force back to the sheriff's department if it's fully staffed working in there because that's one too many patrol deputies.
So for the sake of example, in order to calculate the budget, what we did was we put, I know, I know you don't want Dupuy to go to 10, but we had to put a body in there just for calculating. So we moved Dupuy.
He's the agent that got pulled.
He's the one in 46.
Yeah. Temporarily, just so we could do calculating and get a budget for you for, for the Clark, what we're calling the Clark version, because to reflect the changes that.
We did last time.
We moved Dupuy into, into 10. We cleared out the sergeant position, which we had in there in error. And for the sake of example, we moved Anthony Jones down to town contracts in the airport. Just to.
He's, he's the extra patrol, the last deputy patrol.
Right, right.
Excellent. If you understand what Monica said, that is a practical matter, is what would happen anyways if the sheriff was fully staffed and couldn't find a place for Dupuy. He would come back to patrol and the last guy they hired and whatnot was the layoff.
We did it just for, in order to calculate correctly the number of bodies.
That's the closest you're going to get to calculating the cost because you don't have crystal balls to who to go and where and how many people it's going to still be there come June next year.
Well, that's the sheriff's job.
Well, if not the sheriff's job, well, I hope it's the sheriff's job to try to keep as many people there as you.
Yeah.
First look at the news agenda. There's people, we've been county government.
Okay, so, so what I don't understand is, on one side, I'm told that we're, that we're going to have to lay somebody off because there's nowhere to pay for them.
And that's, that's a scarce act. He has enough uses for, for existing deputies and whatnot. That, he doesn't have to lay anybody off.
Laying somebody off never come out of my mouth.
Okay, so I don't know where you got that from because the sheriff would never say that because he knows he needs more deputies right now. That he's got more positions available than he's got deputies. So there's never any reason to lay off and it won't ever be.
I say something, so during this whole process, okay? Talk about the airport position. You know, that's going to be filled in three months. Whether it's me or somebody else that's going to be filled. And he's right, okay, we're going to be promoting somebody hopefully in backfilling. But during this whole process, we needed another, we're actually moving, two people come January, somebody four months in the academy, but that neither here nor there. But we needed one more position, which is what we thought we had. So there's no, right now, there's no increase in sheriff's budget on personnel by bringing Dakota over. And I think.
And Joe, excuse me, I don't want to interrupt, but that's fine.
Please don't, please don't. I'm, I've, I've got a thought going. Thank you. So there's no increase to the county budget on our personnel side. And going forward, we need somebody else. And I think it's totally up to you guys at the end, but the BACs are, we need at least one more person going forward this year. So that, you know, he talked about filling that up. I mean, we, you know, we're, we're pretty full of the civil deputy. That might come out of patrol. It might come out of somewhere else. But that's not held in control at all.
So the other thing you guys have to keep in mind is that at any given point in time, this spreadsheet changes. So even in the budgets that we started before, there's going to be personnel changes. So we have to look at, to try to make this work to fit with what you want. What is the total change in each department? So if you're not adding a deputy, if you're moving somebody over from another department and not adding a deputy, somebody in the existing list of deputies has to be bumped somewhere. I don't care if it goes to the airport, wherever, you know, can be civil patrol, it doesn't matter. But to make the math work to fit within the 2024 budget you want without adding a position in 10, you through keeping the current level of taxation, you can't make that work.
Okay, Michael, and, and that's not for us to decide.
If you, which is why we went back to the two of them and they told us we were wrong, that they, that money was in there from Department 46. Put the guy into Department 10 and call it good and don't worry about it. And we can't make that work under what you're telling us, which is don't add a deputy in there.
Well, what I'm saying is, is that if you don't increase the number of positions in 24. What I'm saying is, is that if you don't increase the number of positions in twenty-four over twenty-three, then try to get them to help you decide, so that you can be as close as you can to your estimates, who they presume would be going where in twenty-four. And I don't care if that's a confidential discussion between, but if you want to try to get that, but that's for you and the sheriff perhaps to decide, not for us.
But what we need confirmation on right now is, did the commission understand when this budget that I could get up there for you right now, did you understand when you were moving a position from Department forty-six? It wasn't gonna be added into Department ten as an added position. The intent was that you were gonna move that position, and it was gone, you're clearing them both out. That deputy that's in that position would have to go somewhere else, but you weren't adding. If you intended on adding him in Department ten, then we just need to take line for line, take Dupuy from forty-six and move him and all his estimated budget into twenty-four, and you're good to go, but that does add one more position in a deputy.
We never intended to move the position from ten, we intended to abolish it.
All right, well, then that's like, that's the issue right now.
No, that's, that's the position now. We never intended to lay off anybody. But we never intended that the position in, in the position, and the funding with that position in forty-six is abolished. So now, we have a person who we need, the sheriff needs to find a place for. And that has less to do with the budget, because as far as the budget's concerned, he only has eighteen positions, funding for eighteen positions, and with his help, you can come to as close as soon as possible, if you wanna come up with a figure. Nevertheless, it can't exceed eighteen positions.
Which this right here doesn't.
When, yeah, that's, that's right where it should be.
Uh, when the BAC came back, and, trying to remember, they supported supervisor being there, because that was fully funded, and then they wanted one position, is that right?
Yes.
And what I'm remembering from it is that went right, is, I thought we were saying that we would fund a position, we would fund that position in the drug task force, when and if another officer got filled.
Third officer got filled, right, then we would, we would fund, but from a source outside.
Yeah, outside, okay, so I wanna make sure, like, I had, I had this conversation just happen.
So. I thought, cause I gotta say, I was very confused last week, and, uh, last meeting, and I'm starting to get confused again. I thought what we were doing is we were, cause I don't know any of these people. I thought we were taking that position out of forty-six and putting that position in, in.
Ten.
Ten. But that's not what, that's not what we did.
That's probably because you're having a discussion with, 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 with Scott Kane, but that's not what we talked about here. You know that's not what we talked about. I told you that if he got all his vacancies filled, and was ready for an additional deputy in twenty-four to come back to us, talk to us, we would sit down here and figure out where we were gonna get that money for, John said CBA. Now, go back and listen to the meeting, Paul, because you know that's not what we agreed to, that's never.
Well, I'm not, so. Mike, it's hard to remember, since you know, we've been rolling this over for two months now, it seems. Where did we end up with, uh, the Sheriff's Department in terms of, you know, I forget how many officers the sheriff requested originally.
Uh, he wanted three deputies and a detective.
Yeah.
Four. So, three, four positions. I've forgotten at this point, have we offered him anything? We told him that we would give him an additional deputy after he filled all his vacancies in twenty-four and was ready for an additional deputy. And that's what would come out of CBA funds, if we didn't have another source. I say another source, because I don't, I don't expect for one moment that the MDA is going to fill a third position. And if that's the case, and they don't have it filled by July or August, and that's when the sheriff comes to us, we're gonna use the drug task force money to put towards the deputy for the remainder of twenty-four for the sheriff, a new position. So the sheriff has.
Wait, wait a second. No, because we've taken that out.
No, no, it's, it's setting in a reserve account. We've, we have money in the, in the drug task force reserve account that's available for use by us for anything we wanna do with it.
In the reserve.
In the reserve, in your, in your, to your account. And I'm saying that if, if they haven't filled that, that task force decision by July or August, a third position, and the sheriff is coming to us in July and August, saying, okay, I'm ready for another deputy, we're gonna use that task force money to fund his deputy, his additional deputy for the rest of twenty-four. This budget, as Michael has it on the screen right now, is exactly the way that we approved it last meeting, is exactly the way that I, I portrayed it to you people.
No, I'm not, I, I'm not arguing that. What, what I'm trying to.
And what you gotta, what you gotta remember, Paul, is you gotta remember to talk about positions of people, because we did not transfer any money from, for a position out of the drug task force into the Sheriff's Department. But we do want to be sure that nobody gets laid off, and that if we take a human body out of the drug task force, it goes into the Sheriff's Department in some form, that the sheriff needs it. And that's his decision to make. We're gonna do everything we can to make sure that nobody gets laid off, and right now, the sheriff has so many uses for that deputy whatnot, that that's, that's removed.
I thought you needed a, a position to keep your, you needed an extra position to keep patrol at the level that it is now.
We have an extra position, yes, to fill up the four groups that we have.
No, that's the additional person.
Excuse me?
That's additional person.
I guess, I guess I can't talk.
No, that's what my question is.
Well, let him answer.
No, I'd like you to answer it. Uh, so, you're, you said you need an extra position to, to.
That's correct.
Maintain patrol the way it is today.
With the, with the promotion of that sergeant.
Yes.
Yes.
Wait a minute, you said as of today? No. He has all the positions he needs to put today's staffing. He doesn't have the people, he has the positions. What he's talking about is he wants to have four people per section for four sections, and in order to do that, he needs to hire another deputy. That's an additional person that we didn't authorize. And we're not going to authorize it until he gets all his vacancies filled, comes back to us, lays out a case for an additional deputy. At that point, we'll decide whether or not we give it to him.
So let me ask you something. So, you've talked about coming up with money for the additional deputy for him, but to me, like, we mentioned it under two different circumstances, one is a patrol deputy, uh, and then one that's gonna be, in theory, uh, at the drug task force, am I right? That we're essentially talking about two positions?
Yes.
Right?
Yeah, we're gonna have to create two positions.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure that I'm not.
Which you also mentioned a third possibly, but you didn't know where any of the funding for that would be, so.
Basically.
No, for this, you talked about out to potentially three different new deputies, but if the one that was specific was, as you stated, patrol, task force, if the state contributed, and then may consider a third one, is what you said, based on, gotta write on the thing. You said, may consider a third position, but you don't know where the money's coming from, you'd have to discuss that at that point. So, if there was no direct commitment, but you mentioned.
Third position would be two additional for twenty-four?
So basically, you have. Yeah, I mean, it's, cause you, what we're looking at right now is the position in twenty-three after this year, and twenty-four doesn't exist, so again, it's, you're creating that, that drug task force position exists right now, but as of January first, it won't exist. So you will be technically creating a new position i- in twenty twenty-four.
Where?
Well, you will, because it doesn't.
Forty-six.
In forty-six, sorry. So in forty-six, drug task force, January first, you have one position in that department. So if you decide that, that the state does come through with air, and you're gonna fund somebody, then you have to create a new position, you know it exists right now, but it won't exist as January first, to plug that person into and how they will be funded. So that's why I'm saying the three that you've mentioned, so that would be one, one would be the deputy, and possibly a third, if he was completely full and he needed it, then it would be considered.
Uh, there's a misunderstanding there, because that, that's a net increase in twenty-four, two deputies.
Essentially, yeah, yeah, essentially, yeah.
He asked for three deputies, he said no, and he said, it got back to, you could have one deputy in twenty-four, we never, never.
Okay, let me just, you can give me a second here.
Go ahead.
Well. Let's go back to the patrol side, okay? The airport should be taken out of that, that's not patrol, that's the airport. So, we have a civil deputy open. So at what point in time are we not full? I mean, on the patrol side, we're, we're full now, we want another deputy. I mean, that's, that's how simple it is. We're full now, we want another deputy. You take, you gotta take the airport out of it. That's not patrol.
If you have eighteen positions filled in the Sheriff's Department today, and you are fully staffed in the patrol division.
I agree with you, we want another one, is that, that, that's my point.
You don't have any money for another.
Right, give it to us, that's what we're asking for, we, we've always wanted another position, we wanted more than one, but.
We're talking, you know, we're going to.
You haven't funded any new positions in the Sheriff's Department for next year, so we're asking for one.
We're going to entertain a request for a new deputy in twenty-three, that's a whole new subject.
And, and, you know, and the deputy that's in the drug task force now is that coming out of the budget. Okay, whether he's assigned to forty-six or not, that's not an increase. You're lowering forty-six, which funds you've dedicated there, putting them back in Department ten, because all we get reimbursed for that position is the stipend that the state pays, so the basic salary is in this year's budget, whether it's in Department forty-six or Department ten. So if we move him back.
In the BAC budget?
No.
No, in the approved budget, twenty twenty-three.
Oh, twenty-three, I'm sorry.
Okay, so that money's already in there, that is no, moving that person, and, and I'm not gonna use people's names, that's offensive. That's, we shouldn't be using people's name in any situation, that's not fair to them, and quite frankly, it's offensive. So the second piece is that money's already in the budget, whether I assign him over there and get reimbursed or not. So he comes back over here, there's no net increase in the cost of the budget. We've asked for a position above and beyond that, so that we can fill up the, the, the four groups that we have and promote, we did ask for more than that. Yes, we did, and that was tough. Okay, we'll go with that. We're asking for that one position, and that stipend, so that we can promote a sergeant, so that we can have a sergeant in charge of each one of those four groups as they were. And in order to make that happen, this, this is part of why we went with the, um, with the new schedule that they wanted for, in order to do that, we needed this, this other person to make it even with everyone. And the other part of that is, you know, I've been told more than once that my primary function is law enforcement. Uh, the law enforcement there, anything above and beyond that is great, like town contracts. So I guess if you look at that same mentality about last in, first out, the last contract I agreed to and signed was down the airport. I don't have people staffing, what do I do? Look at that and say, okay, we gotta close the airport?
How is that for a threat, huh?
Not a threat, it's just, that's just.
No, I don't say it for a threat.
It's not a threat, it's just reality.
It is a reality.
Well. And I have no intention of doing that, okay? But we could've settled all this stuff long before than playing these games in the middle of, of, of the, these sideshows here at, at public game. If we just had gotten together prior to this and said, okay, this is what we've got, what do you need, how are we gonna make this work? But that wasn't, that didn't happen.
Last year, we had a fully staffed, we had eighteen people, plus a guy in drug task force. The guy in the drug task force was actually in, in Department ten, but being funded through the drug task force.
He came back to ten. He came back.
He is working in ten but being paid out of, out of forty-six, right?
Right.
Okay, so if we do away with that position in forty-six, January first, we are now down a person or a body.
We have, if he's fully staffed in the Sheriff's Department and they polish that position in the drug task force, where there is an agent in there, he's now one too many positions in the Sheriff's Department.
And he's got one too many people.
One too many people.
Yeah, and he's, so he's short a position, that's my.
No, he isn't, he's not short a position, because we haven't given him an additional position in the.
But he had it in forty-six, he was using it in ten.
We abolished the position that is no longer there.
So now, instead of nineteen people, he's got eighteen.
No, he never did have fifteen. He has eighteen in Department ten, period. He's got, he's got one, he could have two, we'd work on these two, and then he had one position in forty-six, he's got, uh.
But he was using it in ten.
He's got three. Only because he was short-staffed in ten and brought him back in the patrol division, but that was a decision that he made. That doesn't change the budget.
Well.
Now, if he wants to continue to leave him in ten for the rest of this year and pay him out of forty-six, that's a decision he can make, I guess, I mean.
But what happens after January first is what?
There is no, there's no position in forty-six until the state funds and fills the third position, and then fills the fourth position, and it's that painful.
See, go ahead, John. No, go ahead.
We keep going back to the drug task force, and then, I mean, I'm, I'm going back to patrol, so. Simple math, and I'm pretty simple, Reddington Mill High School, um, know a real bit of math, but our intent was to have four people per section. We needed that sergeant stipend and one more person to make that happen.
Yes.
That's, that's simply what we need, either you give it to us, or you don't.
And I already said, I already said we're not gonna give it to it until they get to a certain point in their staffing level.
We're full, we're full, Commissioner.
Twenty-three, you're full, let's talk about January of twenty-four, come back on January twenty-four and tell us what your position is. What are your positions, and do you have them all filled? You know you have a vacancy right now with Tim Cody getting you. You haven't filled, so that's, somebody's gonna get promoted there. Are you gonna be able to fill that position? No.
We're interviewing this month of that, as a matter of fact.
Well.
You wanna know that?
We're talking about the twenty-four budget.
Yes, we are.
And when twenty-four rolls around, come in and talk to us about your staffing level.
So, so.
That's no way to run a budget, I mean, we should know what we have to work with.
My point is, he needs to do what he just said takes, how many people? Eighteen? Four?
No, you're, you're talking sixteen in that part of the budget.
Yes, so sixteen. Two deputies and four sergeants have four sections filled.
Yeah.
Now he's making the age-old pitch that he made months ago that we rejected, now he's coming back to us at the end of the budget process, making the same pitch again for people that we already turned down. I don't blame him for doing it, I'm just saying that this is far too late in the process, all we're trying to do is get the numbers.
I'm trying to make it, you know, we had people here from different parts of the county. I'm trying to make sure that we have, that we're, uh, we have the positions to, to, to fill. And it, to me, we're short a position. Right? Because.
No, well, he may say that we're short a position, but we're saying that we don't buy it. We've said that several times, we don't buy this footage today. We need to get all your positions filled and back to us, we, we'll talk about this again. As far as the budget, to me, we promised the position to the sheriff. But I do also agree that it was contentious upon him, positions getting filled. So, to me, we're gonna increase his staff by one this next year.
When?
It's the question.
Outside the budget.
Yeah, outside the budget.
That's the task force position.
No, no, no.
Task force is.
This position you wanna put in the budget right now, we've already promised to give him at some point from an outs, from a source other than the budget. So the position that you, you're advocating for is, John and I said, yes, we're willing to give you that position, we'll pay for it out of CBA or other funding. Once you get all your other vacancies filled and you're ready for this deputy, because if he's, he's not ready until July, for whatever reason, and whatnot, and we budget a full year, we've wasted six months of taxpayer money on money we didn't need because he wasn't ready to hire anyone. So, he's got a promise from us on additional debt patrol deputy once he fulfills all his vacancies in the department after January first. So we're, we're giving him, what you want him to have is just that he's not gonna get it through the budget.
I just wanted to clarify, so you're talking, you're not talking the airport, you're talking patrol deputy, correct?
So you're saying nineteen. Nineteen in Department.
So, if we come back here the first week in January. So, if we come back here the first week in January, we're full, you're saying you'll give another deputy? Thank you.
Out of CBA money?
Whatever.
Or whatever. And I just wanna, so just so I'm wrapping my head around this, for department forty-six purposes, which is drug task force, there's only one position, and that's the supervisor's position, 'cause it's a hundred percent reimbursed, okay? Just so I understand this.
And, and just to clarify that piece, you know, it's not up to MDEA to fill that position, that, that third position that we've alluded to, that's up to us to fill it, it's up to them to fund it. There's a big difference between filling and funding, they're not gonna go find somebody and bring it in unless we couldn't. So theoretically, if we could get two people out of, out of patrol that would go down there, the state would fund one of them, and then you made a commitment that you'd fund the other one. Starting in July.
That's exactly right.
Correct. Starting in July, because MDEA is very good about loyalty, and what I mean by loyalty is that Hancock County Sheriff's Office has been in on the ground floor of this, and has been very supportive of that task force going along. They wouldn't just arbitrarily come in and take that position, and I've been assured of that. But if it can't be filled and they need the position, you know, I would have to say, okay, I guess if you can find somebody else from another department, um, then that's what you have to do. But regardless of where that person comes from, um, the state is gonna fund it. If we commit to funding the fourth position, and as the director told me yesterday, that wouldn't happen until July one, because they don't have it in their current budget, which expires the end of June. But he would put it in the budget starting twenty-four, twenty-five, starting July one. So that position would be half a year.
But where, where do we need to be?
Well, I just, one quick question, I was going cross-eyed and we'll all get back to it. But, um, is the, the stipend, the stipend there, Commissioner Clark, I just gave him what it is.
Where is it though? I'll see it, I'll see it.
The, the issue, and Monica, correct me if I'm right or wrong, but if you recall, when we went to the BAC that night with the position, we had it listed as, because, and I still stand by it, but I'm wrong, I know. Still stand by that there were, again, four positions that were asked for, and that four position included the money that also had the sergeant in it. Doesn't mean that person was gonna be given that, but just lumped something together, there were four positions on the ledger sheet, which included the sergeant. When the BAC came back and started doing their adjustments and all that stuff, what you guys did, and what they ultimately approved, it still included the overall line item that had the sergeant pay in it, and the budgeted deputy as a fourth deputy or second deputy now, because we took two off the shore. And it also included the vacant position that was created as a result for, in twenty-twenty-four by moving a position back to forty-six. So I'm not trying to complicate this, but basically the budget the BAC approved had one vacant position that essentially they wanted to keep, that commissioners originally had moved back to. And then there was another position that included the sergeant's pay in that. But when by what occurred at the last meeting, it, it removed those two. So if your intent is to fund in the budget the sergeant position, then you need to include that money in it.
The, it's not the sergeant's position.
Well, the difference, the difference, yeah, the stipend amount.
Even the sheriff agreed when he was putting this together for the BAC, that that's all he was talking about was the difference, so that he could promote an existing deputy to sergeant.
Yeah.
And we've got the money.
And when we broke that up originally, we should've separated those two, but they weren't, and they weren't until after. BAC, and they still are right now, because obviously you were adjusting yours based off what the BAC approved.
So that stipend isn't in here?
It's not in what you add here, but it would have.
You don't have, you don't have the.
It's not in the budgeted amount we've got up here, right now.
Because I remember we were talking, I said, take one of the existing patrolmen, I don't care who it is, just for budgeting purposes, and add to that patrol, the difference between a patrol and sergeant's pay, that covered, that gives him the money for.
Which we added back into the position that was there, but that already included one of the positions the BAC had. So we didn't take that back out and put it in there. And whether that's a misunderstanding, it doesn't matter, the point is, which we're gonna bring up. It wouldn't be an issue if you're planning on funding that from forty-six anyway, because then this would've worked. But ultimately, based on what you said, dude, take the two positions out, we took the two positions, it was included that. So we have to add whatever the difference is back in to get that to balance.
And do that.
If you're intending on funding that through the budget, not necessarily.
No.
Whatever you do with the new one.
Play it through the budget.
I think that helps, because I, I think that gives them the chance to promote from within.
Yeah, and if you're looking for a number, I would say realistically, we'll look at who, the senior sergeant is, who proposed, who most likely would be the person promoted.
That's what we did.
And we'll look at, oh, you did?
I, I've done it in another version.
Okay, okay.
Just, just for funding purposes.
Right, just for budget.
Yes, right, yeah, no specific.
So if, your, what you just said, though, you haven't added four.
Not in this version that's right in front of you.
Yeah, and that's which.
So, and I'm not gonna lie to you, we create another version if, if what Paul thought was correct were additional positions. So we'd have it, so you guys could have those numbers, if that's what.
Well, I've been proven wrong, it sounds like.
You understood, so, but that numbers that you have also included the, the stipend amount, which now we can just add to your version that's up here.
We'll have to fix it up.
The difference.
Yes, and sorry.
Because what I asked, this is what I... This is what I asked, which was the difference, right?
Yeah.
And an extra position. But now we're saying we don't need that extra position, because we're gonna give it to them.
Out of some source other than the budget.
So what you would ask was basically, or understood is, what you said to me. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No.
Wrong frequently, as I'm told every day.
No.
Uh, but I understood basically you were saying, if you move department, the person with department forty-six, which you did, that your intent was they were gonna be moved in and the budget dollars associated with that.
That's right.
The position, we're gonna go in department ten. So the second, which isn't what's happened up here, that's not what there.
Yeah.
But the second stretch you could develop, which also added in a sergeant's stipend now, because we're trying to correct things based on, on going dialogue. So, would've been, but just wondering here, if it is correct, then we just need to add the sergeant's stipend.
Yeah, if you ignore Paul.
So ignore Paul.
Yeah, so take this, throw that out.
Yeah.
Just increase.
This would what is, this would increase by the sergeant.
And does, and what I just heard is that's what.
Well, I just, I've got a, there again, we're talking people and budgets. So, come January first of twenty-twenty-four, I want to budget people, then the airport position has nobody in it, correct?
That's right.
Okay, that's, we're good, yeah, we're good.
Airport position, so, what was the question? Airport position has what?
The example I gave you earlier was that we had moved Jones.
Oh, I see.
And in this case.
Just for the purpose of funding.
Right, right.
Then existing numbers.
So what kind of difference? The truth of the matter is, there's no difference, maybe you put in the, the airport, because it's a hundred percent reimbursed ultimately. So if you put somebody on that's more expensive, you get more revenue.
You base the revenue off of it.
You don't, 'cause you're right capped at a certain percentage.
It's a set thing.
Do what?
You're, you don't get more by having somebody who's paid more, you know, you get thirty percent, that's whatever the percentage is.
Yeah, the FAA, it's a cap, they don't give us any more money.
The county doesn't cover the difference?
Yes, well, the airport, yeah, the airport will do a transfer at the end of the year.
But as far as that account's concerned, the revenue and the, the expenditure, no.
Yes, but as far as getting reimbursement from what, FAA, they don't.
Much less.
Yes.
Yeah. All right, so I do have a question about the drug task force again, but I'll make sure that we, that I understand what we're talking about happening. So we've agreed that we'll pay, we'll get, we'll get, uh, a position there if it gets funded, if another position gets funded through, uh, through them, but then I've also heard mention of a fourth position, so are we talking?
So, based on what was here, there were a couple different things, so, there was the taking of the reserve money to fund one of the MDEAs if they staying agreed to fund the third position.
Yeah.
So that's the second, that would be the second one, but.
I don't know what this fourth one is, though.
But.
I don't know what, I don't know what they're talking, I don't know why.
I think the, what it was, Commissioner Clark, I wonder what words came up, but you were talking numbers, you were talking four and five, because they funded the first position, and they fund a couple more, so when you get to the numbers, they fund two more, that's three, you were saying if they fund four, we'd fund five, back, might recall that, so.
Right.
You were doing numbers, and that's where the numbers came from.
Four agents, supervisor, four agents, that's the five you're talking about.
Yeah.
And I'm saying.
You were talking numbers.
Right, and I've said all along, and I think we understand that if they fund and it gets filled, that third agent, then we will fund the fourth agent once it gets filled, which is, mm, yeah. Now, talking about funding, because MDA is not gonna fund that third position until January, or July first, then we're not gonna fund the fourth position until after July first, which means the task force monies will cover the cost of that agent for the rest of the year.
And that would come out of CBA or something?
No, that's right in the reserve.
I mean, out of the reserve.
Out of the reserve, right.
Yeah.
If it ever gets done at all. But, and so now we're talking about the airport deputy, whatnot, talking about CBA, we're not talking about using CBA for three, four, five different reasons. You know, we really nailed it down, we do, we do have, have a commitment, a promise of what we wanna call it, to vogue for the dispatcher, but we'll have to look at that.
So, and that would say is, sorry, just real quick, but what had been said was, the one department ten, a hundred percent CBA, the one potential MDA, and then there was one potential second deputy, talk about, see where we're at and have, if have months, where those monies would come from.
What he made.
Was, and that was.
Did the first deputy have it in the budget?
So first deputy was, no, CBA, potential second deputy, if he needed it, and there was no commitment, because you didn't have any idea where the money's gonna come from.
Certainly in there, despite that, I'm making, I personally would make a promise to the sheriff, he's got one deputy after everything else gets filled in twenty-four, and I don't know where to help him find money enough for the second deputy, but don't sell your firstborn kid to get it.
So you're filling department ten, that's what you're talking about, you said that the airport is a separate issue.
You have, you have responsibilities, Scott, when you come to us and say, I want a new deputy, whatnot, you've gotta have those other responsibilities taken care of. Now, you have gone to great lengths to convince the whole world that, that drug task force needs agents, you better be putting agents up there. Okay, all right, so.
So for clarity purposes too, when you said earlier that January first, they can come in and request a deputy if they are filled, you, everybody understands that to be if department ten's full, not the other departments.
Just let, let discussion generate first, Michael, I don't wanna have a discussion.
I, well, I mean, I understand, but it sounds like they're saying department ten is full, then they can come in and request it, am I wrong with that? Or is that what, is that what you understood?
That's why I asked it earlier, and they acted, yeah.
So the other three departments, it wouldn't matter based on what they say?
The whole discussion would go, what defines department ten being fully staffed, that's a whole discussion, because of that, we're not paid to let them, we'll have that in January.
As long as it's understood that department ten, I mean, department twelve contracts, which include the airport, civil patrol, and drug task force aren't part of that agreement.
I didn't, I didn't say that, I don't know if that's.
Well, that, that's the, a conflict here, because you're saying one thing, but then you're also saying.
And we're, we're being forced into making all these commitments today, when all we're trying to do is get through the budget. And I'm saying that for the sake of the budget, you've got it up there, once you add the sergeant, let's approve that with some money for, as you say. With the rest of this and whatnot, we're gonna have to have another discussion on another day with these, surrounding these.
Yeah, which is fine, but I'm just trying to prevent the misunderstanding and them coming back.
Me too.
Yeah, I want to, what, what do we have to have filled?
Yeah, good luck, because what happens is, is that in an effort to get the budget done, because they're making promises that we, that should be decided independent of the budget.
I understand that, but to me, the problem is, you know, we have all this drama that happens around here. I'm trying to alleviate so that there's clarity, we don't wanna have the cruise through thing again and all of that. Yeah, 'cause that happened at the end of the last budget thing, so, in my opinion, to be in the position, the position to be full, it's the contract, the contract, the county contracts have to be full too. It's to me, that's, to me, it's all, I mean, I know that's different, it's just different.
But to me, that's the control people, do you have another control? You're absolutely right, John, that's a discussion you should have on another day. Well, we know where my, if you want somebody to, to press to fund the person out of thin air, the positions need to be full. That's where I stand. So can we agree that this budget that he has up here now is the budget we wanna approve once he gets the, once he gets the sergeant's addition? Now, having said that.
And RCC.
No, right, just gonna say, we need to come up with a figure for ICC, because we can't fund that money, we can't fund it via, via, so. Uh, we need to just add an amount.
Do you have an agreement for the ICC?
We have, we have a TDA, a tentative TDA, such, such a thing. We have a TTDA. So, for the purpose of simply covering some of the cost of personal services next year, I'm going to propose that we add a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for personal services.
Yeah, because that covers, back in that can math.
Increase, that'll cover some of the deputy, you know, I mean, the dispatcher. That's not gonna cover the full cost, but we don't know for sure when we're gonna need that. Well, it is, we filled one of the three vacancies today, or one of the four vacancies. One of the four, one of the three, so we have still two vacancies there, yep. Just if they'll fill, we'll use another.
Well, then your office today.
So what do you think, hundred and fifty's adding a hundred and fifty thousand? Fifty more to the personal services line for that department, for the ICC. And do we want to add a corresponding number for benefits to be another ten percent?
Well, I, no, I think the hundred, exactly, a hundred and fifty figured in the benefits.
You talked about that, you.
But you're only funding the increase in the existing staff, we still have a new deputy, a new dispatcher we wanna hire, I'm saying that.
Or we took away a dispatcher last week.
One way. We still, we still have promised you a dispatcher, but we said, first of all, that we find, fund it for that somewhere else. And I'm saying that we're just, somewhere else is gonna grow out here.
Yeah, especially, yeah.
And so I'm saying that we should add monies to the budget for this new dispatcher that we're promising for, not keep him hanging up there with other monies.
So we're un-removing the dispatcher?
So what?
On, on your paperwork last week.
Two original ones, and he said to remove one.
Right.
Yeah.
Are we funding, are we funding ones?
Correct.
In the budget? I didn't think we're funding any of the.
Not new, no.
I moved, I moved one. All right, so we took both QA into representation, I was asking addicts. So I have, I still have an outlawed position.
And you need twelve positions. And we didn't fund the twelfth position in the proposed budget.
That's right.
And I'm saying that we should be funding some of that.
Okay, so that has.
So a hundred and fifty, but no, we're gonna need most of the hundred and fifty just to cover the increases for the eleven existing.
Yeah, we said that was a hundred and forty something.
So, I, I mean, the other part of this, I guess, the, the reality is, if you tell us what you want, I mean, we can, and understand the numbers are gonna change. I mean, we can plug that all in and come back at the next meeting, 'cause you're gonna take the final vote at the next meeting and approve and sign, but at that time, we can come back with that, if it's clear and it matches what.
It's about sixty thousand.
Which we can show you. What, for a new position?
Yeah.
Are you suggesting, Michael, that if we don't want to try to find monies for this outside the budget, that we, we, we figure out what the increase is gonna be based upon our TTA, the benefits that go with that increase, and then a new position?
And we're putting that position back in.
Because that's what, that's gonna be two hundred and ten, two hundred and twenty thousand.
Right.
And two hundred and ten.
Right.
Do you wanna see two hundred and ten more in the ICC budget?
Yeah, I don't want to, but we.
Okay, so that's what you got.
Well, then we'll plug that in.
Figure out what the increase would be for the existing, but a new position, things, and that's the number.
We'll send that to you again in advance before that next meeting on this. Uh, so that you'll see it, so if we misunderstood or misinterpreted something, it'll be free view.
All right, you won't hear that.
I know what's there, but. I know what's there, but. And then that way you just know exactly what it is and what you approved on the seventh, that's where you're going to be, if that's what you want to do. If you're just assuming you're going to do the hundred and fifty and then whatever the difference is, we have to make up somewhere else, then we can do that today, but it's just a matter of where you want that money to come from, which sounds like you're okay just putting it in.
I think we can get it. Sorry.
Yeah, I don't think, there's just no more places to get it from.
You know, I've been critical. City mills with seventy percent increase note, since I got my test. We're going to be sending fifty percent.
Yeah.
We didn't make better.
So Monica, we're both in agreement, we know what they want, so we'll put that together and send that to you, but that'll be what will be presented the next meeting.
Well, and I just want to say, Monica and Michael, I'm sorry, I misunderstood this, I'm sorry to make you feel for this one.
There's only, there's no limits in the number of times we'd love to put stuff into the, so we don't have to apologize. We cherish that.
I don't know, okay.
That's my political response.
Okay, so what else we got? We're done, right?
Okay, so we're not going to take any action with regard to exceeding the, okay, with task yet today.
No, and, and. Yeah, and then you can help us with a suggested motion.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll probably put something on the agenda.
Yeah. Okay, so we're done. County Administrator's Office comments, I don't know how long here.
So so just a couple of quick things, one, I had a selectman from one of the towns contacting, say, Washington County does like a, a a big cooperative business process where they basically serve as the entity to collect all the needs of the county communities that want to participate in that bid, and then the county sends out a bid to all the suppliers to essentially provide a number on what the cost would be for the solve. And then each individual community would then go back and work their deals out, but they would commit to signing on whatever the county comes up with. Now, this gets a lot more, it's, that's the basic overview, so it's a little bit more to it, but basically whether or not, and I can't imagine doing this year because by now they should all have their agreements, but potentially looking next year, is that something you want me to try to consider? Is looking to see what that would entail. It basically would be a way to assess all of the municipalities and hopefully in volume, some of them will get better pricing than they would.
And I've talked to Michael about this, and the first consideration I had is how much time is going to be tied up until we do it? And Michael sounds to me like he's going to be tasked with getting, defining out what communities would like to be involved in the bulk purchases of the solve, and then he's going to be getting out the request for the holes of each of the suppliers. But once that happens, then once we select, you know, a successful bidder, each town works directly with that bidder to acquire this little thing, so.
I mean, the way, the way you ideally, I think, would want to structure it, so we're not signing a contract with the overall amount, and then we get stuck with it if a community doesn't want to pay or.
So the question to you, Michael, is, is can you handle the initial phase of this?
Well, I can, like, I know Bar Harbor, they were already.
So a lot of them, it depends on, like Bar Harbor, obviously, they have to volume too, but many of them, other communities rely on the M D O P one, or they have enough on their own that they can, they can get a good pricing, so they don't go through a cooperative type of bidding process with others. But this is like, th- these are like the smaller communities, or even like island communities, that there, there's no, they don't have the volume, so they're going to pay premium, and if it is an island community, then they also, we talked about shipping, they're also going to pay the shipping on top of that, so it's not even close to any sense for them. I mean, I can certainly do a little more research and find out exactly what we would do, the first year yet, there's going to be some, some initial work involved to get this all set up, just like there was with the control. After that, you should be able to, in theory, get everybody to sign on board, find out who wants to participate in the, in the, how much they need, send that to you, but we still have to plug that into ours to send out there here.
So I'm wondering if it's workable, if you think it's workable, then.
And to be honest with you, a hundred percent, I can't say it is going to involve some time, but I would want to look at it a little bit more, but at least right now, the community's asking, would you even entertain that? And obviously for this year, it's not going to happen, but if you want me to look into it some more, I can at least give them that as well.
That's the way I think.
I'm starting to make excuses, so I'll, I'll do some work on that. The other item, and I have nothing to report on this yet, but I will just tell you that Jeremy Gray reached out to me in email late last night, uh, and said he wants me to call him, so he wants to give me an update, so the guy is from the state of the courts. So he wants to give an update on where they're at right now, so hopefully by the next meeting, I will have additional information provided. We'll see.
Because depending on what he tells you, it depends on what feeling.
Yeah.
I had also, but we can, we can put it more into better form for next time, discussing the, the end of the twenty twenty-two.
Oh, yeah.
You brought it up a little bit.
Yeah, because we didn't talk a lot about it, I thought the transfers associated with, I mean, if you want to chime in right now, just to mention it.
So I did try to ask the auditor what we had for balances going into twenty twenty-three in order to, to find out if we've had a number that we could use for, for transfers to possibly bring the budget number down. And he went in, in depth with me a little bit more on, on explaining how that works, and we, the general fund had a two million dollar plus balance at the end of twenty twenty-two, but the undesignated fund was in the negative by about two hundred and twenty-five thousand, two forty, something like that. In order to, in order to bring that balance back to zero at the end of F Y twenty-two, he suggested working towards taking some of the funds out of a couple, out of a couple of G accounts that have funds in them that just sit from year to year, to try to bring that number at the start of twenty twenty-three back to a balance zero for the beginning undesignated fund. Um, and there are a couple of G accounts, retiree health benefits and retiree health, that just sit there with a balance that we could use to zero, and I could do a transfer sheet if you want to see it on paper.
Does he know that you're suggesting those two?
Yeah, it was his, it was his suggestion.
Of course, it's their suggestion that we build that fund up?
No, they, these don't get built, they just sit there and don't get used.
I know, but when we first put those in there, that's his whole theory about if everybody retired tomorrow, we need that money, or likely will have that. So anyways, it was their suggestion that we put that in in the first place.
I think it was from the maritime days from years ago. Um, and we did, we did use some money out of one of those accounts a couple of years ago when Lieutenant Loz passed away, but.
Are we going to try to bring that to zero in one year?
It would be in, at the beginning of F Y twenty-three, at the beginning of this year.
We covered the full two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar.
We could, we could do that with these two accounts.
Because that's, that's been short every year, right?
Well, I mean, I was told by prior administration, historically it was until he got here, and then he would be able to get a couple of years of positive balance. So.
But there's, there's never been a mandate created since, it's, it's.
That's right.
It's a nice goal.
That's right, that's right.
It's not real money, it's just, it's counted, you know what I mean, it's not like somebody's not.
Yeah, we can't reduce the budget by that.
Well, you can't, it's not like somebody's not going to get paid, it could be only two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
That's right. It's the undesignated fund.
Where this comes back into it is that you couldn't, like, and right now, I suppose it should be noted, so that we get everybody to clear. This budget that you're proposing right now doesn't include any transfers in, so like last year, we had a two hundred and fifty, last year before, that was like four. Right now, you haven't put anything in. And one of the things that had been talked about is, if we had money, the, you know, undesigned it, then you could pull some of that money and it would then become designated if you needed it as part of the budget process. Uh, right now, you haven't instructed us to do that, so right now, that's zero, and you're not planning on taking any CBA funds out to transfer in as proposed unless you intend on doing that.
Do we have a, do we have a proposal, a suspected undesignated fund balance for twenty-three?
No, he said we'd have to take a, take a look closer to the end of twenty-three, see how it's looking.
Do you have a ballpark?
Not, not here.
I mean, I would, I would think it is healthy, I think it's.
I'd have to, I'd have to take a look.
I, my.
We'd probably have to do the same thing.
Feeling or inkling is that you're not going to make up that full amount, probably.
Right, we'd probably have to, we'd probably be having this same conversation again.
And may, may increase, but hopefully not, but.
But, but we have to have that settled for the next week.
Well, the budget portion, you, you do if you want to say a transfer, then I can say you're not going to take undesigned right now and transfer it in, because you don't have, from twenty twenty-four, January first, you technically don't have anything to transfer. And even if you did what you proposed, that just gets us back to zero. So if you're going to transfer anything, it would be like you did last year, the instructions that if it's needed, you would make everything work out. You transfer in the two hundred and fifty thousand from CBA, is what you said last year.
I don't think we can do that. Well, we, we, we are, we're just doing it in a different way.
Yeah.
Last year or this year, we raised the money and then we put CBA money into it, this year, we didn't raise it, we used the CBA money to pay for it. So you see, we're doing the same thing, we're just doing it in a different way, using the CBA.
Yeah, and the time is all.
Yeah, because you're not doing it as of January first, you're potentially doing it later when it's needed.
Yeah.
Right, and that was, that was my purpose of doing it, is that you don't raise the funds that you ultimately might not need.
Okay, so there will be no transfers in?
There's no transfer in right now.
At this time, yeah.
I think that's all I have. I mean, we can come back to you at the next meeting again with that specific suggestions, if you want to see it, to get that, but if there's no interest, then obviously we just.
I don't see the purpose.
Okay.
Do you, anybody else see the purpose?
He already said.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Okay, okay, Monica.
Thank you.
Okay, commissioners' comments and suggestions?
I would like to have an explanation from somebody explaining to me what, trying to find what to say. At the end of the year, each employee contributes something towards the fund.
Hic, hic, ma, R C, yes, mission statement is called.
Mission, 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 I was at Mission Square.
Mission Square.
And tell me what that is, I.
I'm not really sure anymore, it's something.
It's an HSA. So if somebody retires, Monica, if you can correct me if I'm correct, it's a health savings account that only retirees have.
Or separate from employment.
Or separate from employment, and they can use that money to help pay their medical, so that's the work.
I was going to say the medical bills. So it has really nothing to do with accounting, it just contributes into your own fund.
They're basically taking at the end of the year, depending on how many days each individual employee has left, per their collective agreement, yeah.
Comp time.
They're basically taking that money and we're, we're moving it from our books showing as that to like basically sending a check to them, designated for each individual employee, that might.
So we are, we are paying.
Well, I mean.
We're contributing.
But we're, we're contributing based upon what the standards are indicated in the agreement, which says if they have so many, above so many, they will contribute X days or X days, right, so it's in the agreement right now. It's mon, it's, the benefits were given to them based upon other previously agreed, so it's not like we're giving them extra benefits, and in theory, we could send them nothing one year if they use up all their time.
Right.
But if they haven't used up all their time, it's pulling some of that out at the end of the year to possibly.
And how do we fund that?
I mean, essentially, there.
There's a budget line in the group to benefits, Department thirty.
And you just try to come up with enough to cover, huh? I mean, somebody estimate how much we need.
Yes. I increased it, this, I increased it in the twenty-four budget based on what we paid for twenty-two.
And have we spent any of that, have we actually sent money?
Yes.
For last, last.
For twenty twenty-two.
Twenty-two, so it's, it has to be done as of December thirty-first.
So even though, even so the employee. When I came in February, I, we were a little bit late on it. So when I came, when I came in March, I worked on that and got it through by the end of March or the middle of April. Took, took me a little while because I didn't know.
Okay, so we, we do contribute to it, we just don't know if somebody draws it down or not, that's between them and that employee, so that's not, that's. We are paying this every year into the trust.
We're paying it based on what they have available for sick time.
As indicated in the collective margin.
And the employee cannot touch it at all while they're still in service with the county.
So retiree.
It's, oh, if you have to separate from service or you have to retire from service in order to be able to touch any of that money.
Does it help you with premiums?
It's like copays, like dentures, medications, that kind of stuff.
And they can, they can use it for the premiums too, anything that has to do with healthcare.
Your money, your payback being.
I still have a long word dispatch, I can't touch it until I return.
Right.
A jail negotiated, that's their contract.
And negotiated out?
Yeah.
Wow.
Would you give an exchange?
So benefit me that I'll burn all the sick time off at the end of the year. They have so much time on the books and they pull it out, so they was burning their time, so they have to give anything to it, that's what's causing it. So what it gave to them, they could carry some hours, they could carry over the hundred hours, whatever it is, a fifty hours, a seventy hours over the first of the year.
Okay, I just needed.
Based on how many years you're in service, correct?
Right, right.
And it's up to seven days salary if you're over, I think, fifteen years or whatever it is, that amount goes into this account.
Good job. And.
I know.
Me just, uh, I won't be able to make that first meeting in March.
March?
March.
Twenty twenty-four?
Twenty twenty-four, same as last year. Just giving you all kinds of heads up.
Must be a looming convention.
Okay, we're ready to adjourn?
Do you want to set up a time for next week to talk about that budget? You guys have time, you guys have time, we're going to do it this week, but it's just a dream.
John? We have a, John, move to adjourn, you're in second there, though?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Move in second in all favor?
All right.
Aye.